Let's pray. Thank you, God, for the gathering of your people to learn about your word. We thank you for the presence of your Holy Spirit among us, who will give us wisdom and help us understand, guide our discussions, so that we can help one another grow in faith and as disciples following Jesus Christ, in whose name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Okay, so we're looking at Exodus. And this first part is found in chapters one through five. And you don't necessarily have to follow along in your Bible, but it doesn't hurt. I wanted you to have your Bible last week so that you could look at at your table of contents, and then we talked about Genesis a bit. Oh, and I don't have any PowerPoints tonight. So what's happened now? At the end of Genesis, Joseph became a high-ranking servant to Pharaoh. And all of his family ended up coming to Egypt during a famine. And the family multiplied and multiplied and multiplied. And now the Egyptians don't remember Joseph anymore. Excuse me, I said Jacob, I think originally it was Joseph. They don't remember Joseph anymore. And there are so many of them that they're afraid that the Hebrew people are going to take over Egypt. So what do you do when you're afraid that a people is going to overrun you? You enslave them in some way. And so the Pharaoh decides to enslave all of the Hebrew people. And they still are producing children like mad. And there are two midwives that serve the Hebrew people. And their names are Shifra and Pua. And they've been instructed by Pharaoh to kill all the Hebrew males. But they defy Pharaoh's orders. And so he instructs his own people to throw male babies in the Nile. And so we get to the story of Moses. Yokevad, which I don't believe her name is mentioned in Exodus, but the Jewish people call her Yokevad. That's Moses' mother. And she hides him for three months in her home. And when she can't hide him anymore, she builds a basket out of reed and puts pitch on it and floats him in the Nile River with her daughter Miriam watching and making sure that he's safe, doesn't sink, so forth. Well, one day Pharaoh's daughter is bathing in the Nile and she finds the baby in this basket and thinks he's cute. And so she decides to adopt him. And that's when Miriam comes out of the weeds and says, hey, I know somebody who can be a wet nurse. And so she goes get and gets her mother, Yokevad. And he, you know, says, here's a wet nurse for you, happens to be Moses' real mother. And the Egyptian Pharaoh's daughter pays Moses' mother to wet nurse him. The princess, the Pharaoh's daughter names Moses, Moses, which is an Egyptian name, which means draws out. And so what? If you remember now, and I'm not going to suggest that the Ten Commandments is by any stretch of the imagination, an accurate account of the Bible, because it is not. But Ramses is the name of one of their pharaohs. And in that movie, Ramses is Moses, you know, co-prince. And then you can see Ramses and Moses. So you can see that Moses is actually an Egyptian name, not a Hebrew name. Because it has that S at the end. In this section of Exodus, Moses figures out that he's a Hebrew. He gets mad at an Egyptian who is abusing a Hebrew slave. He kills the Egyptian that has been abusing Hebrew slave. And for fear, runs out of Egypt and goes to Midian. And he meets Zipporah at a well. And ends up marrying Zipporah and has two children with her. And her father's name is Jethro. While Moses is in Midian, a new Pharaoh has taken over and is an even more horrible taskmaster than the last one. And God hears the cries of his people and then speaks to Moses from a burning bush. Were you, did you have a question, Doris? Okay, your, your, your square lit up.
Lit up.
I don't think it was even on my mind.
Okay. So you can't see it, but when somebody talks, your square lights up on my screen. Like now, Mike's square lit up because the dog barked. She went up on the couch.
Yes, she does.
Well, she can be up on the couch for Bible study. That'll make her calm down.
We'll share her with, come on, come on.
Now, the thing about this bush, hi Elaine.
Hi, I was having trouble getting on.
I'm sorry. We're talking about Moses. And you probably know a whole lot of this because you did the Bible study last year with Kat. So the thing about this burning bush is that, and there's nutmeg. Doesn't like being held like that.
Pretty good.
So the thing about this burning bush is that it's a flame, but the bush is not consumed. So the bush remains intact, but there's this flame coming out of it. And it's during this encounter with God that God identifies God's self. And Moses asks for a name because God is telling Moses to go to Egypt and get Pharaoh to set my people free. There's a good African-American spiritual for that, too. Go down Moses, set my people free. And so, and that also is about slavery in the United States. And the name that God gives Moses, we translate as, I am that I am. It can also be translated, I am exactly what you need, or I am what tomorrow demands. I personally like that interpretation of the name. I am what tomorrow demands. And it is a name that our Jewish brothers and sisters never speak. Instead of saying the word, they say Hashem or Adonai. The word isn't even completely spelled out in Hebrew in their Bibles. It's like the first letter and the last letter with a dash in between. And it's a four-letter word. And the word is Yahweh. And if you spell it in English, it's Y-A-H-W-E-H. And so when you read the Old Testament and you come across a capitalized The Lord, and O-R-D is capital, but it's slightly smaller than the L. That's how it appears in my Bible anyway. You can pretty much depend on that being a place where in the Hebrew scripture, the word Yahweh appears. And so the translations, because our Jewish brothers and sisters will not say that word for fear of taking the Lord's name in vain. Hashem and Adonai both mean the Lord. And so it's, it's translated in our English Bibles as The Lord. And in Hebrew, the telling somebody what your name is is a way of giving them power over you. So you didn't want to give your name out necessarily because then they would have power over you. And it was still like that when Jesus was around in the first century. That's a very Jewish Asia Minor kind of mindset. So God has introduced God's self to Moses, given his name, and is telling him to go to Egypt to set his people free. Now, I want to go back to a couple of things. First of all, the story of the flood in Genesis. And along with that, the story of Moses in a basket in the river. I was in a history class at Western Michigan University and being a good little church girl, it was kind of scary for me because I didn't, I didn't know what to do with evolution at the time. My friends were all literalists. And I went to this history, world history class. And the professor said, every culture from the Mesopotamian region has a flood story. Now, what that did for me is tell me that, ah, God really exists. But it scares some people to hear that. So when Abraham was called to leave Ur, he took with him a flood story. But by the time the flood story was written down, it was a totally different flood story than what most of the people in the Mesopotamian region have. Because in the Mesopotamian region, they're polytheistic. And so the flood happened because the gods, little g plural s, were unhappy. And they saved one person in a boat, not the person's family, just the person. There are also stories in Egypt and the Mesopotamian valley that about their gods being saved by being floated in a reed basket in a river. So again, that story came with somebody. Probably came with Abraham when he left Ur. Now, for me, that's assuring, but for other people, it's a frightening thought. So I'm going to stop for a minute and ask you, you know, what do you think about knowing that? I didn't know until I went to seminary.
Well, if it was just one person, how would the population increase?
Oh, because the gods can make more people.
I see.
Which is true of our God. Our God could have made more people too.
Yeah, there was a lot of dirt around.
Yeah, that's right.
Lot to work for.
Is it comforting to you? Is it challenging you?
I feel it's a comfort.
Go ahead. What did you say, Mike?
No, I feel like comforting too, because one of the reasons I think the stories in the Bible, particularly New Testament, have power is they really made an impression 2,000 years ago. This stuff to come historically, to come to us so much unchanged, you know? And that's history showing us how truthful that is.
But for the Old Testament, it may not be literally true. It is truth, but it may not be literally true. It may not be a, an accurate representation of historical fact. It is a truth about how people behave and how we rebel and how God tries to bring us in line through that rebellion. So other thoughts?
I guess I, and I've wrestled with this over the years. You know, just the literal, you know, versus the more the figurative. And I had grandparents on one side that the Bible was, was very literal. So, you know, I've had that to wrestle with as, as well in my upbringing. But I tend to think also that, that God made us with a brain and bestowed some intelligence, I guess, in us. And, and so as Mike was saying, possibly God's word is, is to teach. And hopefully, you know, we, we read and think and, and try to understand. And the more that we do that, the more we have learned God's lessons. So I, that's, that's one, that's one thing that I've, I've tried to use as, as I've wrestled with, you know, how, how to interpret the Bible.
Yeah. Any other thoughts or comments, questions?
Well, it's like when you explained it to the kids when we had that discussion of the literal versus the figurative. And it was like playing telephone. If you get a group of people together and the first one whispers something. And by the time it goes around, the story has changed. And you keep telling us that obviously before there was the written word, they had campfire stories. Well, it would change over time. And I think where we're at today, we, you know, the Bible is a written word, but we can interpret it in our own way. And we don't have to say, this is the exact truth. You know, we can do a more, I don't know, not be as literal, be more figurative in, in thinking about, about things that are written in the Bible.
Yeah.
You know, we take, we take what we need out of the story.
Yeah.
So Brenda, are you saying you find it more comforting because there are other flood stories? Is that, is that so?
I don't necessarily think the entire world was flooded, but there was definitely something.
Yes. So there is a piece of truth somewhere. Yeah, yeah, I would agree with that. Yeah.
Yeah, there was definitely a big flood in Mesopotamia.
Yeah, some event happened.
Yeah. Yeah, and they used that big event to teach about human nature and about, in our case, the one God, in the other cultures, the gods.
Yeah.
But I, I don't know, I don't think that the world was flooded.
And all the animals weren't marching two by two.
Yeah, yeah.
And back then, that was the world to them.
Yeah, true.
That's it, that's it. The world only consisted of that small area, not the world that we know of today.
Yeah, the world was very small.
Isn't that Noah's Ark that was found on Mount Ararat?
Yes, well, they believed that is something that could, could have been Noah's Ark was found on Mount Ararat, yes. But
as in lasting all that time too.
Yeah. Yeah.
Do you think, Pastor Brenda, we get so caught up in the stories and, and they are, you know, really neat stories. Or we try to say, you know, is this history or could this have happened? Do you think that really the, the Bible is more a character study? It's more about human beings and, and how human beings are, but the potential that God has for human beings or how God wants a relationship and what he or God would want for human beings? Do you think more of that?
Yes. Well, for example, you know, they can find no evidence of a King David ever having existed. So do we need to have a King David that really lived in order to pay attention to the stories and what the stories mean? Does, you know, was Jonah really swallowed by a giant fish? Do we have to believe that the giant fish really existed and Jonah had to be swallowed by it and get vomited out three days later? Which is the Hebrew word that's vomited. Do we have to believe that that's true in order to receive a truth from the story?
Why do we tell the kids these stories if we don't know that they're necessarily true?
Because they teach us about God and humanity. The point of Jonah and the whale, or Jonah and the giant fish, is not that Jonah was real. The point of the story is that God wanted to redeem an evil people, the city-state of Nineveh. And Jonah didn't want to help redeem those people because they had killed his people. And they had, you know, the story goes, they had killed his people. So I don't want to help them be redeemed. And so he rebelled. And the, the part about him being in the big fish for three days is more about what happens to us when we rebel, when we rebel against God's will than it is about being in a big fish. What happens to us when we rebel? Well, we suffer the consequences of our rebellion. And so he could do no other than what God asked. God made sure that he could do no other than what God asked. And he walked through Nineveh and the whole city-state was saved. And at the end of that story, Jonah goes off and complains to God because that whole people was saved. So what does that say about our desire to see people redeemed by God? Jonah was a Hebrew and he didn't want to see those people redeemed by God. They were enemies of, they were his enemies, his people's enemies. And he did not want to see them redeemed. So the story really talks about human rebellion and how God gets our attention and how God, how God makes God's will happen no matter what. So whether we cooperate with it or not, God will make it happen. It'll happen easier if we cooperate. But if we don't cooperate, it'll still happen, but it won't be, it won't be pleasant. Does that make sense?
Yeah, yeah, for me, it's like the, the little details aren't the important part. Like, I know, you know, people even with creation that literally believe that the world was exactly formed in seven days. I don't know, maybe it was, who knows? I don't know. For me, it's not, it's not a big, I don't get bogged down in those little details. It's what's, what's the big picture? Maybe animals did go two-on-two, I don't know. But the, the bigger story of the knower story is about redeeming man. And for me, that's what I choose to focus on.
Right, right. Yeah, so if we go back to creation, there is truth in the creation story of God creating in six 24-hour days. Now, for me, that's not the truth that's in the story. The truth that's in the story is that when God created the earth, he also created a dome over the earth. Do we not have a dome over the earth? It's called the ozone layer, right?
Yeah.
They didn't know what that was called. They just know that God created a dome over the earth. There is truth in that story, but it is not literal and it's not scientific truth. It is what a primitive people could think of at the time as truth. And it was similar to other creation stories in other cultures. You know, there's, I've been reading a book called Black Elk Speaks. He was a Lakota Indian. And that wolf story that you repeated, Larry, that's one of his stories. About there's a good wolf and a bad wolf and which one wins, the one you feed. That's a black elk story. So I've been reading that book and parts of the book read just like Revelation. They read just like Revelation. So for me, that doesn't detract from my faith. It says, God is present not only in my faith, but in other faiths as well. And God is reaching out to us through these stories that help us understand. So yes, there are truths in these stories, but it's not, God created the world in six 24-hour days. The Bible also says that 1,000 years is like a day to God. You know, that's in the Bible too. So I don't have to believe that it was created in six 24-hour days. All I have to believe is that God created.
Right, right.
Does that help at all, Doris?
Yeah.
I, I know it's challenging you. It was challenging to me when I first Um, it, it was challenging to me when I first learned this stuff. But it also helped me to not hang on to things so tightly. Um, because when we hang on too tightly, we, we push people away rather than draw them near. So going on to Exodus six through nine thirty-five. That's my bird clock. One of the things that happened when God spoke to Moses is Moses tried to get out of the deal. And he said, I stutter, God, so don't make me go talk to Pharaoh. And, uh, God said, well, that's okay, because Aaron speaks perfectly well, so Aaron will be your mouthpiece. Um, and so then he had no other choice. He got God's name to give to them. He has a mouthpiece. So he has no other choice but to go. So the two brothers a- appear before Pharaoh and demand the, the freedom of the Israelites. And, um, Aaron puts down the rod that God gave them, and it turns into a serpent. And it swallows up all the other serpent rods that belong to Pharaoh's magicians. Pharaoh doesn't care. So the next day, Aaron strikes the Nile with his rod, and it turns all the waters in Egypt into blood. But the royal magicians of Egypt can do the same thing, so Pharaoh doesn't care. So then, um, the next plague is frogs. But Pharaoh's magicians can duplicate that. Our gods are equal. Who cares? Um, but Pharaoh does ask um, to meet with the brothers to try and get a reprieve from the frogs. But as soon as the frogs are disappeared by God, Pharaoh reneges on his promise. Then Aaron strikes the dust and they receive the plague of lice. But this time, Pharaoh's magicians can't make the lice, so they're saying, um, their god is God. Only their god's finger can do this. But Pharaoh still wasn't moved. So the fourth plague, insects that eat up the land. So Pharaoh pledges to release his slaves, but as soon as the insects disappear, he changes his mind. Um, the next plague, Egyptian livestock um, are killed with a deadly disease, but none of the Israelites' animals are killed. So now I'm going to bring up one of the things that we talked about, um, with Barb and some of her Sunday School children. That's not fair for God to kill all those animals. And that's one of the reasons that I don't necessarily believe that this is literal. It is not about literally killing the animals of the Egyptians, it's about how stubborn the Egyptians are to grant freedom to these people that they have enslaved. Until there are ten plagues, and Pharaoh reneges on all ten plagues. But the tenth plague, he reneges too late. Um, and so, yeah, what do you say to a Sunday School child who says, it's not fair that all those Egyptian animals got killed. They didn't do anything to anybody. Well, no, that wouldn't be fair, but that's not what the story is about. The story is about how stubborn Pharaoh was in freeing slaves. And he was so stubborn that, you know, these are the, there are things like this that would have been happening to him, and he still wouldn't change his mind. It didn't make any difference to him that a people was enslaved. That was okay with him. Um, so then, there's a plague of boils. And that, that torments the Egyptian people and their beasts, although I don't know how there are any beasts left if they all died from the disease. See, that's, that's what I mean. How are there any beasts left to have boils if they all died during that plague? You're not supposed to ask that question. You're, you're supposed to accept the meaning of the story. Then fiery hail is sent, and whatever they have left of barley and flax gets burnt up with a fiery hail. Every time, Pharaoh refuses, refuses to grant freedom to these people. So now we move on to chapter ten through thirteen sixteen. And we still got the plagues going on. Now we've got locusts as if there's anything left to destroy, but there's more destruction. Um, and at this point, even Pharaoh's consultants beg him to let the slaves of Israel go. Because Egypt is lost. If we suffer any more of these plagues, I mean, we've lost everything now. So please, just let them go, so we can stop suffering. That's how people are. When people get something into their heads and they can't let it go, they keep doing the same thing over and over and over again, even though it makes no sense to do it. I mean, we could say the same thing about First Congregational Church. We know that nineteen fifty-five doesn't make disciples anymore. But we keep doing nineteen fifty-five because comfort is better than discomfort. And change means discomfort. Well, what's going to happen if we don't change? If we don't take the discomfort and change? What's the end result? What was the end result for the Egyptians?
Everything destroyed.
That's called cognitive dissonance. It's, it's when you keep thinking that the way, you, you don't listen to any facts. You don't listen to anything that makes any sense at all. You're going to keep doing what you've always done because it feels safe. But it is not safe. It is dangerous, and you end up, like the Egyptians, losing everything, being destroyed. See how that story, the story, the bigger picture of the story is much more about human nature? And how we react to things. That's what the story is telling us. Does some, does somebody have a comment? I just saw Mike raise his hand. I didn't. So a black cloud of locusts comes with the east wind. They consume the remaining crops and fruit. Egypt is completely bare. Pharaoh, Pharaoh, please for mercy, God puts all the locusts in the Reed Sea. Not the Red Sea, the Reed, R-E-E-D-S. That's what our Jewish brothers and sisters believe, that it was the Reed Sea or the Sea of Reeds. But Pharaoh goes back on his word. The ninth plague darkens Egypt for three days, but the Israelites have light where they live. Pharaoh, um, agrees to let all the Israelites go, but they won't, they can't take their livestock. And Moses says, nope, we're not doing that. When we leave, we take our animals too. And so Pharaoh banishes him from the palace, and Moses says, I shall not see your face again. And leaves. And that's when the tenth plague happens, which is also a very unfair plague. If you're a child looking at this, and God says, okay, you're going to have a Passover meal. And every family, and if you're a small family, you're going to share with another family, you're going to kill an unblemished lamb. And you're going to paint your doorposts with blood, so that when the angel of death comes over, when it sees the blood, it will leave your house alone. But all the Egyptians who don't have that blood on their doorposts, their firstborn children are going to die. And again, didn't we have a child say, that's not fair? It's not. It's not fair. Um, and that's why I don't believe that it's literal. It is about how stubborn we are. And when things happen to us that prove to us we're stubborn, and we still keep doing the same old thing over and over and over again. That's what that story is about. How stubborn and quite frankly stupid Pharaoh was. He was an idiot. Um, and I know you don't, you don't like me to say negative things, but I mean, goodness. What else do you have to have happen to you before you give up? And even when the Passover happened, and Pharaoh said, yes, go, go, after his own, you know, family loses the firstborn, and, and Pharaoh says, go, go, he still changes his mind. And sends his, uh, soldiers in their, with their horses and chariots. And, and backs them up against the Reed Sea. And they're, you know, the Israelites are stuck between the water and the soldiers. And the people lament. And, um, that's when, you know, they tap the, the Reed Sea with a rod, and it opens up and they cross over on dry land. But here again, is something that one of the Sunday School kids didn't think was fair. After the soldiers all got in the Reed Sea, the water came in and dropped them all. So after centuries of slavery, six hundred thousand Israelite men with their wives and children. So, I mean, even if you say modestly, they had one wife and two children, you, you're talking about two point four million people who left Egypt, and that's modest. That's a modest estimate. Um, and they took all their livestock with them. And they took a whole bunch of gold and silver from the Egyptians before they left. They went to their neighbors, their Egyptian neighbors, and said, uh, give us your gold, give us your silver, and they gave it. And then they left with the gold and silver.
They just gave it with no questions?
Well, after all those plagues, when the Hebrews came and asked for something, they thought, perhaps if we give them what they asked for, we'll be okay. Can you see that? You, you know, can you see how that would cross their minds? You know, that's what the, um, that's what the Jewish commentary that I'm looking at for this said. You know, they, they thought, because the question was, why did they give their stuff? Well, because they thought giving their gold and silver to them might buy them protection. And that's, that's logical. That's how people behave. Maybe I can buy protection. Instead of doing the right thing for the sake of doing the right thing, I'm going to buy protection. So now we're in thirteen seventeen through seventeen sixteen, and we're obviously not going to get through Exodus tonight. Um, just to let you know. But the Israelites now go into the desert. Um, and they have with them Joseph's bones to bury his bones in the family plot. Um, because he didn't want to stay in Egypt. He wanted to be with his ancestors, his father and, um, and grandfather. Abraham and Isaac. And Jacob. Um, so great grandfather, grandfather. Um, father. And once they get through the Reed Sea and the, the water comes in and kills all the Pharaoh's soldiers, they journey on, but they complain of hunger. So God provides manna, and then they complain, we don't have any meat. So God provides quail. And then on Friday, they're allowed to, they're only allowed to take what they absolutely need to feed their family. If they take any extra, it spoils. Um, and people try to take extra, but it spoils. And on Friday, which is sundown Friday, is, is Shabbat or Sabbath, they're allowed to take what they need for Friday and what they need for Saturday. And, um, they complain about that too, because it's boring. We're getting the same old thing, God. No matter that it falls from the sky every morning, and all you have to do is pick it up. This is the same old thing, God. Um, and then they don't have water. So God tells Moses to strike the rock at Horeb, and fresh water flows out. So they complain about everything. And as part of those complaints, they say, we should have stayed in Egypt. We would have been slaves, but at least we had food to eat. We won't starve out here. At least we had water to drink. We won't die of thirst in Egypt, we'll die of thirst out here. So what does that tell us about human nature?
We want a balanced budget.
We're never satisfied.
Faith, we have no faith.
You know, God hands you things, you know, drops things from the air, and he has stuff come out of the rock and, and, you know, it's never enough. I'd rather be a slave and not be uncomfortable.
I'd rather live in the fifties.
I'd rather be a slave and be comfortable than have my freedom and experience discomfort. I mean, that's the old points of these stories.
Don't do anything new.
The nice thing about the kids asking these questions is they're on a faith journey, and it's an active one.
Yeah.
So, so, so we need to celebrate that, that they're raising these kinds of questions.
And that's what I said too, and, and I told their mom, I said, this really encourages me. They are so into the stories that they have, they wrestle with them. Um, and that is, by the way, what Israel ma- means. Um, it means one who wrestles with God, or God wrestler. So God expects us to wrestle with scripture. God does not expect us to, you know, oh, that's nice, I believe everything. God doesn't expect that.
No.
God expects us to wrestle with it.
It's, it's, it's not an answer book, you know?
No.
Read the Bible, you got all the answers, you know what to do in every situation. It's, this, and I wouldn't want that.
No, what, and, and that's why it's so important to read scripture in community.
Amen, amen.
Um, because one person can, um, we just, oh, we lost Mike. One person can have one interpretation, but it's not a full interpretation. Um, and so we have, we have men and women here, that's better. Um, and we have some diversity in age.
A little bit.
A little bit, yeah. A little bit, yeah, but not a lot. Um, we don't have any people of color here with us. When I was in seminary. Um. The passages that deal with women. Were particularly. Challenging to some of the men. And, um. One of them, one of them was, how could Mary stand there and watch her child die? Kneel to a cross. And I happened to be in the room while the professor, who was a male and a couple of other male students were talking about that. And none of them could see how they could do it because they couldn't do it. And my response was, as a woman, she was there when he was born. If he's going to die before her, she's going to be there if she can. That's how women think in general. If my child is going to die before me, I'm going to be with my child if I can. Um. Men don't think that way. How in the world? Could at least not those three men? How in the world could she sit there and watch her son be tortured to death on a cross? And my answer was, how could she not? That was her son.
Nobody said it wasn't hard for her.
No.
Right.
No, it's probably the most difficult thing she'd ever done in her life.
Yeah.
But she wasn't going to be any other place but where her son was.
Right.
Um. So.
Jesus had already told her that John was, was her son and that, that. Mary was his mother.
Right. Yeah, and John had charge of taking care of her. Um. But you're not going to. As a woman. And I don't even have children, but I can tell you, I helped raise my nieces and nephews and, and if they were dying, I would be with them.
When my sister's son died. She was with him. And I was with her.
Yeah.
That's why it's hard for me to not be with my sister when her husband died because. The distance in our health is too great to. And, and so we, we've gotten even closer, I think, because she relies on me to talk to now.
Right.
We, we talk more than we ever have before.
Yeah. And that's absolutely a very difficult thing to not be present. I know I was not with my mother when she died. And I still lament that. And she's been gone. Five, five years. Yeah. And I still lament that and feel horrible that I was not able. To be with my mother when she died. I was with my dad. And, and as a former hospice chaplain, I know. That people choose. To a certain extent, when they die and who's there. But that still doesn't comfort me about my mother. So. Yes, it's very difficult to not be present with someone you love. Um, when they die, if you're able to do that, not everybody's able to do it. So any other questions or? Comments about what we've looked at in Exodus so far?
I guess the imagery of the journey. Um, throughout Exodus in terms of. Um. You know, the, how God is playing all the, you know, all the different areas of the, you know, of that Exodus trip. And you know, this is, this isn't the only time that the Israelites are taken over. There's many times when they, uh. Kind of like, you know, having the calf, you know, when the Ten Commandments was going on, where they just, you know, they just kind of forget who they are. Luckily, God keeps forgiving them.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I want to say something about wells. Um, we didn't talk about the well stories in Genesis, but there are well stories where, um. Abraham. Yeah, Abraham sends back to Laban. To get a wife for Isaac. And it's not Isaac that goes, it's a servant that goes, but the servant meets Rebecca. At a well. And knows that she is the right one. Then when Jacob has to beat it because Esau is going to kill him for stealing the inheritance and the blessing. He goes to his uncle Laban and he meets Rachel at the well. When, when Moses goes to Midian, he meets Zipporah, his future wife at the well. And it's important to know these things because now when you get to the Samaritan woman at the well. Our Jewish brothers and sisters would understand that completely differently because they would have that Old Testament background of. These people met their spouses at the well. The well is an important place to meet women. Now, not because Jesus married the Samaritan woman. But because you expect something. Extraordinary to happen when a Jewish man meets a woman at a well.
Well, and it did, you know?
Yes. And then it gets even more, um. Complicated when you find out she's a Samaritan woman, which means she's half Israelite and half something else. And only half believes that the Jewish people believe. And they both, the, the, the Jewish people and the Samaritans dislike each other intensely. And yet here is Jesus talking to a Samaritan woman at a well. So that, that's one of the reasons that I love the Old Testament so much. Because understanding it gives you the background. For understanding some of the things that go on in the Gospels. Um. And that's one of those things I wanted to point out, the well stories. Okay, it's seven twenty-seven, so I'll stop talking. Would anybody like to close in prayer? Okay, I will. Let's pray. Thank you, God, so much for your word. And thank you for showing us how your word teaches us about our own humanity. And about your great love for us. And about how you never give up. Nudging us. And, uh. Disciplining us and trying to get us to do the right thing and go the right way. And we thank you for that. We pray for all those in the Ukraine. Who are suffering. And we ask that. You bring peace to that area. And that you change Putin's mind. Keep us all safely until we meet again. In the name of Jesus Christ, your son. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. So very enlightening. Yes.
Oh, thank you. Next week, six thirty on Zoom.
Okay.
God bless.
God bless you.
Good night.
Good night.